Okay, this meeting is called to order, please rise to the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we're ready for roll call.
Counselor Beal.
President.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
President.
Mayor Kiefer.
Here.
And Council President.
Here. So I'd like to start the formal proceedings. We'll open the public hearing. I have a bit of an agenda to read to you, just some information about the hearing. So, the public hearing on zoning permit, ZB 21-066 is called to order. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear an appeal from the planning commission's decision to approve the permit application. The application by Yumital Electric Cooperative for confirmation that his proposed transmission line is a permitting. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, public testimony in the following order versus the applicant, UEC. Any testimony in support of the application? Any testimony opposing the application? Any neutral testimony? The applicant's rebuttal, if any. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council has a specific question. The city councilors may ask questions of staff, after which the council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date that you will receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those people who wish to speak. If you are attending online, just hit the raise hand icon and I will recognize you. If you testified, please give us your name and address for the record because this hearing is being taped. We also need this information so we can send notice of the decision to everyone who participates. Please keep your testimony concise and to the point. Any questions you may have should be addressed to me. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. By law, our decision is limited to only these criteria. As such, please make sure your testimony addresses those criteria or other criteria you believe applies and explain why you think the application either meets or does not meet the criteria. Please note, failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the city council and the parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise a constitutional or issue regarding any condition in sufficient detail to allow the state council to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. I would ask councilors to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge city councilors' impartiality?
Yes, I do. I will first I got to know who's going.
I believe we all are.
We all are ready, okay. So. So. On September the 28th, at the workshop meeting, if you go to minute 1926, Mayor Kiefer said, "I could care less about the county side and the other side of road construction." He could care less about the property owners on that side. He has woefully said that he has a biased opinion about that matter. Leslie Pearson, at the March 1st, on the March 1st executive session, at the 2:34 second, she said that she, quote, "I, she said, 'I need to recuse myself regarding discussions or decisions regarding any real estate.'" And that was on March 1st, 2022 executive session at the 2:34 minute mark. And I can pull this up from YouTube on any of these things or the or the voice recordings on this. So, these things were very important as far as the biasness that we're seeing on these things. Thank you.
And the next section is for Carla. She'll now present the staff report.
Thank you, councilors. We have before you tonight an appeal of a, what was originally a zoning permit that was issued some time ago to Yumital Electric. The zoning permit is for transmission towers and the associated lines and other infrastructure necessary. The application was, this, but these particular two lots were removed from the earlier proceeding because of the ownership issue related to it relative to the condemnation proceeding that Yumital Electric needed to go to, go through to get to the easement that they hold across this property. Once that was concluded, they submitted their application with that evidence in the record so we could see that they had a condemnation, they had gone through the condemnation process to obtain the necessary rights to enter the property and construct the transmission line. They submitted the application November 2nd. My predecessor, the community development director, deemed that application complete on November 3rd. He issued a notice of decision on December 22nd. On January 5th, it was originally appealed. On February 2nd, the planning commission held a de novo hearing to consider the appeal. At that point in time, they continued their deliberation, allowed the record to be left open for written, additional written testimony. They came back on, and I'm gonna get the date wrong, but I believe it was February 23rd or 24th, to review what had been submitted and to render a decision, which they did. And in that decision, they denied the appeal and they upheld the community development director's decision to issue that permit. Notice of decision was issued on that. And then within about a week of that notice of decision being issued, the appellant again appealed the planning commission decision. That is what is before you this evening. You have a lot of information that's in here based on the appeal. So what you have, what's been provided to you, what's been available on the city's website, is the actual appeal documentation submitted by the appellant's attorney, Sarah Mitchell, that was submitted on March 4th. They completed the appeal form and she provided a written exhibit. She called it Exhibit 1, Page 1, and there are six pages to that. They raised a number of issues on appeal. They also included in that the notice of decision, the planning commission decision and the planning commission findings in that action. We did share that information with the applicant and the applicant did exercise his right to submit additional information on March 14th. We received a letter from Tommy Brooks representing UEC. He's with Cable Houston. That's also included in the information you received. The, he spends a couple of pages rebutting what the appellant had provided. You also have in your packet, I guess also included was the notice of decision. In your packet then also is included the notice of decision that was issued on March 4th and our findings that we did at the same time. Actually, no, he attached to that, excuse me, let me refine that. What was attached to Mr. Brooks's submittal was the council's decision, a council's decision that was issued, the notice of decision on March 4th relative to the decision in the other action. So, and that was by way, by means of saying, "You've seen this, you've acted, you've made a decision to approve." Then you have a very short memorandum from myself, hoping to summarize where we are. And a map of the subject line, predominantly the portion inside the city, and again, this is on just two tax lots. These are tax lots on the west side of Laurel Lane owned by the Tolmans. That is followed by a proposed resolution for your consideration. It would be Resolution 6-2022, should you decide to take action on that tonight, with proposed findings. I'm happy to read through those if you would like me to, but it is not necessary. We've also received, today's the 24th, we received yesterday on the 23rd, another submittal from the appellant, appellant's attorney, Sarah Mitchell. If you're following along in the packet, near the end, near the end, it was two pages with a signature. And then this morning, we received a couple-page letter from Kelly Dory. And that is the last item in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. If you want, we could certainly walk through the proposed findings that are attached to the proposed resolution. I want to focus on the questions you have.
So I think that we'll come back to that at the end of the hearing.
We can certainly do that.
Is there additional correspondence beyond these items?
Nothing that was received before 5 o'clock today. Actually, since probably about 6:30 was the last time I was in my office, so.
The applicant may now present its testimony.
Ms. McLean, by the applicant, do you mean the appellant? Or UEC?
It's, it's the applicant. So it's Mr. Brooks with UEC who's approached the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tommy Brooks. I'm here representing Yumital Electric Cooperative. For the record, my address is 1455 Southwest Broadway, Portland 97202. I have appeared before you guys before and gonna try to keep my presentation tonight pretty short. First of all, it's, let me just say, it's kind of glad to be here in person, that things are opening up a little bit. Even though I feel much closer than we have, I also feel pretty distant now where this podium is, so hopefully you can hear me okay. The, I think one of the first things I wanted to mention is, as Carla's going through the materials, one of the things she identified that we included in the record was the city council's decision in the other matter that you did on March 1st, that became filed, I think, on March 4th. And the reason we put that back in the record, and you may have seen this from our other materials, is because every issue that was raised in that proceeding has been raised in this proceeding. So for us, there's, there's not much else to do here. You've seen the issues, it's the, it's the same line in the same zone with this, with the same arguments. So stuff that was before you in early March, we consider that resolved. You are certainly free to take a look at those issues again and assess it, but the, there's no difference in the facts or the law between that proceeding and this proceeding. And we tried to prompt a number of times from the appellant, well, what's different about this time? Why should the, why should the outcome be different? And we haven't seen anything, just more of a recitation of the same arguments and the same facts. So I don't really want to take your time hashing through that again. The staff's heard it, the planning commission's heard it, now you've heard it, both in that proceeding and now this one. So here we are for, you know, for the sixth time addressing some of those issues. We'd like to just, you know, move on past this. The, the different issue, the only thing that's different about this issue, you've no doubt gotten this from your materials, is the question about who is allowed to apply for a land use application in the city. And that's not an issue that we would take lightly, we don't think you need to take lightly. But we think under these circumstances, and these are pretty unique circumstances, that the issue is pretty easy, and that is that you, Yumital Electric did have the right to submit an application. And again, as Carla was reciting kind of the history of this, one of the things that Yumital did was, while we were asked to submit zoning permits for the whole line, when it, when the earlier proceeding moved on, we went through that application as it applied to these two properties because we had not yet obtained the property rights we needed to access those properties. But then we did, and that's a really important piece of this puzzle, is that Yumital Electric did go to court in order to confirm the rights that it had to this, to these properties. And we have a court order that confirms that. So the, you know, this is not something you're gonna see every day. There's not many entities that have the statutory authority that Yumital Electric has. The city has that kind of statutory authority, the county has that kind of statutory authority. And for transmission lines, Yumital Electric has that. So you shouldn't be worried about, you know, what kind of precedence this has set, is this, you know, really anathema to your whole code? It's not. This, this fits in with, with how the law works across, across the board. And the reason I feel confident about that is because there is a court case that has addressed this very issue. And that's what we've cited to in our materials, the Strick Farms case. And basically, it says that when an entity has this power of condemnation, it has gone through this process and, and I guess, received, you know, confirmation from the court that it can access the property, that is basically the property, right? It is the property owner for that purpose. And it can then use the property. And the reason that's important is because an alternative interpretation would basically be the city council rewriting what the statute says. And that's what the Court of Appeals said could not happen. So that, that case is, I mean, we have a lot of other arguments in front of you, but really, on the legal point, that's all you need to know is the Court of Appeals has said that if you're going to interpret your code, you'd have to do it in a way that doesn't repeal the state law. But that's what the appellant's are asking you to do. So I don't have much more to add to that. I'm gonna reserve time to come back up for rebuttal. But I just kind of want to leave you with, with that idea that despite what the statute says, despite what the court order has said, despite what the Court of Appeals has said, the appellant's are still asking you to come up with an alternative interpretation without explaining why that interpretation can happen in the face of all those laws. So with that, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my time, thank you.
We don't have any, we don't have any forms from the parties in the room, but you may have folks on the, on the Zoom call. Thank you, yes. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application?
Yes.
Yes, please, Sarah Mitchell.
Okay, who would like to go first?
Counselor, go first.
Okay, Sarah, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sarah Mitchell, Hellington Law Group. For the record, our address, P.O. Box 159, Lakeview, Oregon 97034. And I'm speaking on behalf of the appellant tonight, First John 217 LLC and Jonathan Tolman, who, as you all know, are the owners of the property that the applicant has requested permission from the city to build their 230 KV transmission lines and towers on. So I want to first address some comments that Ms. McLean made regarding the condemnation proceeding and that that proceeding has completed. That isn't quite true. The condemnation proceeding is still pending at the circuit court. And as the applicant mentioned, yes, they've obtained an order granting an advanced occupancy of the easement on the Tolman's property, but that's an intermediate order. And I just want to be clear that there has been no final judgment in the condemnation case. And we also disagree with UEC's characterization of what kind of ownership rights that order grants to that UEC. And so that's the main issue that I wanted to discuss tonight, and that is the record owner issue. And I'd like to share my screen if I could so that we can all see the portions of the code that I'm talking about. Is that possible, or? Oh, thank you.
I think we're trying to make it happen.
Here we go. We all see in the code, Section 4.1, 700, the deed.
We're not, it's not up. It was briefly in, then it left.
How about now? Are we seeing 4.1, 700?
Yes.
Okay. So your code specifies that for land use applications like UACs, they can only be initiated in one of these four ways. And as you can see, Sub 4 says that, relevant here, they can only be initiated by a record owner of property. And that's expressly defined as a person or persons whose name is on the most recently recorded deed or a contract purchaser with written permission from the record owner. So when the city drafted, drafted its code, it intentionally limited who could file a land use application to these specific people or entities. And it allowed only the record owner or contract purchaser of property to file applications, probably because the city didn't want to be in the business of determining who the legal owner of the property is, which makes sense because the city doesn't have the authority to do that. And no one disputes that First John is the record owner of this property. Their name is on the deed. And there's no contract to purchase the property by UEC or anyone else. But the planning commission decided that UEC had sufficient authorization from First John to file its application, presumably under this subsection B here, which says that any person authorized to submit an application for approval may be represented by an agent authorized in writing to make the application on their behalf because they have a court order granting UEC advanced occupancy of the property. But First John is not represented by UEC, and it can't be because their interests here are obviously adverse. And this section B has to be read in context with the provision regarding acceptance of an application, which is here, that the application must contain signed, signed, written authorization of the property owner of record if the applicant's not the owner. And there's no ambiguity here regarding any kind of interpretation. First John is the property owner of record and signed, written authorization is nowhere to be found in the application materials. The UEC's application should have been rejected by the city, it should have never been decided on merit. And the planning commission also wrongly decided in the alternative that, well, the term record owner is ambiguous. And we think the most reasonable interpretation of the code allows applications to be submitted by the owner of a property interest, so long as that ownership interest is a matter of record. So first of all, I want to ask you, how is record owner ambiguous? The code expressly defines it, tells you what it is. It's the person whose name is on the most recently recorded deed. And that seems pretty clear to me. Look at the most recently recorded deed for the property in the county's records and find the name of the owner. The planning commission's interpretation is contrary to those expressed written words of the code. It completely reads out the requirement that an owner's name on a deed, be on a deed. So here, there's no deed for the subject property for an easement or otherwise that has the UEC name on it. The record owner just can't be interpreted to be UEC. And second, the planning commission decided that even if the code was read to prevent UEC from filing an application, the city would nevertheless be prohibited from interpreting in that way under the Strick Farms case. There are key differences between this case and the circumstances here that I want to be sure all of you understand. And the first is that in Strick Farms, the applicant was ODOT, a public condemnedor that had been granted immediate possession of the property at issue under a different statute than what UEC, a private condemnedor, has been granted here, advanced occupancy. These are two different terms and processes that are two different statutes, which shows that the legislature must have had in mind some kind of different effect for each one when it adopted that condemnation act. And arguably, occupancy speaks to a lesser type of property interest than possession does. And second is that the county code provisions allowing owners to submit applications and defining ownership in the Strick Farms case were much looser in the city's code here regarding record owners. The county's code there allowed owners, not record owners, just owners of property to submit applications and then define ownership as legal or equitable titled land. The county interpreted that to mean that ODOT, who was seeking the title in that condemnation case and had been granted immediate possession, had enough equitable interest to be deemed the owner in that circumstance. That was a reasonable interpretation, and the Court of Appeals upheld that. Here, the city's code is much stricter. It doesn't allow for those claiming equitable interest to be deemed the owner. The city's code is clear that the owner has to be the person whose name is on the recorded deed, and any interpretation otherwise just isn't reasonable. And then last, I want to point out that the planning commission decided that based on Strick Farms, even if the term record owner could be interpreted to prevent UEC from filing an application, that that interpretation would be prohibited because it would nullify or repeal aspects of the condemnation statute. But that's not true. You can harmonize the advanced occupancy statute and the court's order with the city's code with an interpretation that allows UEC to enter onto the easement area and make use of it by doing any sort of preliminary work for the transmission line that can be done without the city's land use approval. And only when the condemnation case is resolved with a final judgment, compensation paid, and the property actually conveyed to UEC, can UEC then file a land use application to the property. So we ask you to adopt this interpretation and deny UEC's application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Are there any others who wish to speak against the application?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Tolman, property woman, as a corporation.
Yeah, we did ask folks to throw over the.
Are we doing it differently now again, or, because this is the first time I've ever seen anything like this.
Well, it, it's true. I, we do have a new testimony form that.
So this is new, just today?
Tonight, yes, today.
Of all the meetings that have ever happened, this is the first time ever that we've done it.
So. So
No, no, I just want to get that on the record.
That is true, but it was also announced during the beginning of it, during the beginning of the hearing. It was told to all of the people who were present that they would need to fill out the hearing form.
Okay, but we've done it the same way, just like what we're doing here. We've done it the same way all the time before, but for some reason, UAC just wants to do it this way a separate time. So I guess I'm a little confused if we should do it the way that we've always done it, or if we just do it just this one time. Kind of ironic.
This city has asked that all of the people who are making a report or wanting to speak would fill out a
But do you see why I'm confused?
I do understand why you're confused. I'm going to explain it to you, so I don't know if you want to fill out.
Well, I'll fill out the form, but I guess I, I, it just, it's kind of ironic that that's what I'm speaking about. Okay, yeah, my lawyer summed it up really good. I mean, please read the files on this. Please have a conversation about deliberation. Deliberation to me is a conversation. Iron, tarp, and iron is what it says in the Bible. Not saying anything and have an awkward silence means that you basically already made up your minds about a decision being made, and I really feel like this is sad. I've tried to negotiate with Humantil Electric. Their offer is $5,600 an acre. That is an absolute joke, okay? If not, I will buy any one of your properties for $5,600 an acre. I don't understand why people don't see it. I do feel like the staff does not report the truth, okay? I asked for this meeting to be recorded on chamber like it was in the fire district, but for some reason, they said because the city and the BCDA pays their money, it would be a conflict of interest. So I said, then it becomes propaganda as far as what is being told because they don't want the city to look in a bad light. And I really feel like that is sad, that the truth is not getting out there and being spoken about what is being said and what is being done on things that are happening to our community. I've tried to have a dialogue. I reach out to UAC and say, hey, let's work together. I have an ulterior route, but I've been shunned on it. I'd like to go over the numbers. I'd like to go over the specifics. But again, there is no, there's no ping pong back. Karen said in that meeting that I quoted from the workshop on 9/28, that everybody's being nice and trying to train this sandbox. I, I'm trying, I'm reaching out. I've reached out many times before to the city council. Please, let's work together. I want to work together. But if you, if you do this, we are not working together. And I, I think that is really sad because number one, I, I believe that you lose, okay? And that's a lot of money to the city that's going to cost them. But number two, why can't we work together? Why can't we have a conversation and try to find out something that works together? Right now, with the parties at B, that is not happening, and I really think that that is sad. And but I promise I will work together with you going forward in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak against the application? Does anyone have a neutral testimony? Does the applicant wish to provide?
Thank you. Goodness, Tommy Brooks for Humantil Electric. I think I'll start just by commenting to the comments Mr. Tomlin made. And I think it's difficult in situations like this to try to have a bigger discussion about what ought to be or should be. And I can understand his frustration that he feels like he can't come to some agreement with Humantil Electric. I'm sure if he asks Humantil Electric, they would say the same thing. It's frustrating to have to be able to come to some solution. That's not for the city council to decide. You are convened now as a quasi judicial hearings body. But it's one of the special, you know, roles that the legislature has bestowed upon you, you know, like it or not. And to, and to look at what your code says and to look at the facts and apply the facts to that code. And whether or not there's another solution out there, that's for the parties to decide. So I, over Mr. Tomlin's suggestion, I actually recommend you don't have deliberations about that, that you deliberate about the code and and what's in front of you. And we think that deliberation can be easy, like I said, because the work has already come before, both in the other proceeding and what the Planning Commission has done. With respect to what, what Ms. Mitchell said, I, I think the starting point where we disagree is whether or not the code is ambiguous. It's pretty clear that she feels like, yes, it can only be read one way. If that were the case, I don't think we could be here. And the place you'd have all you to go to look to to see the ambiguity is the part of the code that says a record owner. It doesn't say the record owner, it says a record owner. And that, to me, implies that there can be more than one record owner. And the reason it's ambiguous is because it doesn't say what kind of record, or it also doesn't say, it says a property, but what kind of property interest? It is not black and white. It is actually ambiguous. And the, the good news is that, again, the legislature and Luba have very clearly said that when there's an ambiguity, you get to determine what your code means. And when we look at the way the code is read, and when we look at how it has to be read in line with the state statute, that's what we were saying with the Court of Appeals has already answered, that when you interpret it, you have to interpret it in a reasonable way. And a reasonable way does not include also undermining statutory rights. And Ms. Mitchell was trying to say, well, this is a different statutory right than what ODOT had in that case. Yes, it is, because UAC is a private condemnedor. It has a, a different part of the statute covers it, but it's still in the state statute. It's still a statutory right that UAC has to get on this property and to occupy it. And I think interestingly, she said, well, the way you harmonize it is by limiting the kinds of uses UAC can have once it gets on there. And there's, you know, maybe they can walk around on the ground. That's not what the court order said. The court order said that UAC can occupy it for purposes of construction in the transmission line. And that's the only reason they can even get that court order is because of the statutory authority that said that they could do that. So you have to look at that, that broad authority that has, has come to play here. And again, it's unique. This is not going to happen very often. If, if this does happen, it's likely going to happen to the city itself. When you're going to do a, a public project, and maybe you need a little extra room for a sidewalk, and you get your, you know, early possession of the right, and maybe there's a land use proceeding, you're going to want to be able to not have to worry about the, the consent of the property owner, just like we shouldn't have to. The, the thing that I think has not been stated here clear enough is that part of our position is that the Tompkins have already granted consent to Humantil Electric. As part of that court process, and we put this in our letter, as part of the court process, Humantil Electric actually had to pay for the easement rights. And it literally wrote a check, gave it to the court. The court gave its order, and then the Tompkins asked for that check. And they, they were given that money. So they've actually been compensated for the easement rights that Humantil wants to use. That is consent to be, to take the money in exchange for that court order. That's all the approval that we need. And those, those findings are also, I think, in your proposed findings, that you don't have to worry about the ins and outs of the, of the Schrock Farms case. You don't have to grapple with what the state law says. What you can say is that based on these facts, this property owner has actually incented the UAC's use. And again, it's, it's a weird context because it, it is condemnation, and it's not something we take lightly. It's not something we do very often. But it's, it is by nature, you know, against the property owner's consent, because otherwise, they would have sold the property. But that's why we went through that court proceeding. That's why we had to go get the property owner's consent through the court action, which the legislature has said that we can do. And when you put all of that together, you have many reasons to be able to approve this application. So, thank you.
So at this time, the public testimony portion will be raised now.
Well, I can't respond back to that. That's per the rules.
Yes. So does staff need to respond to any questions or issues that were raised in the testimony?
I do not have any that I would respond to. We can certainly, if you, if you have questions or deliberation, we can get into them. But staff have provided you a recommended resolution and findings, and we still stand beside those or behind them, or in front of them, or hardly need to stand.
So do the city councillors have any questions for staff?
So my question to staff is, does the city go circumvent the statute if we, if we grant the Because I'm not a lawyer, and I don't really understand a lot of this.
So I'm not a lawyer either.
Right, right, so.
But what I will tell you is that I've had significant conversation with the city's attorney.
Right.
And we are confident that the Schrock Farms case is applicable and that it certainly gives you the right, and even beyond the Schrock Farms case, you have the right as the city council, based on numerous Luba decisions, to interpret your code. So if your interpretation of the code is that UAC is a record owner, that's your interpretation of the code, and you have the authority under the law to interpret the code. So you may have noticed last times with the last decision and with this decision, in the Planning Commission findings, it says, the Planning Commission finds, Luba does not give the Planning Commission the same deference that they give the city council. You have more deference. So we changed those Planning Commission finds to the city council finds. Because you have the deference to make those interpretations of the code. The Planning Commission makes them. They're stronger when you make them. You are the legislative body for the city enforcement. And I, I, the city's attorney is on, on the line. In fact, the attorney's picture on, so I don't know if he wants to add anything to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carla, this is Chris Crane from Bury, Elsinore, Ham, and the city's land use council. I, I, I have to agree entirely with Mr. Brooks. And I'll quote from the Schrock Farms case here. They say, even if the local code provisions by their terms could be read to prevent UAC from pursuing this application, which is what Mr. Tomlin and Ms. Mitchell are advocating, that they're saying that local code needs to be interpreted to prevent UAC from pursuing this application. That would, quote, "effectively nullify significant aspects of state condemnation statutes," end quote. That the city cannot do. It doesn't matter which part of those state condemnation statutes are at issue with UAC versus ODOT. If the, the way you interpret your code would effectively nullify any portion of the state condemnation statutes, that, that interpretation will not be upheld. You have to interpret your code in a way that is consistent with the code and with the state condemnation statutes, which is what Mr. Brooks was arguing. And the distinctions that Ms. Mitchell was trying to make are, you know, I, I appreciate the effort, but they, they are not correct. So I, I believe you do have to interpret your code in a way that allows UAC to pursue this application, and if that, yeah. So I think that was the question. I hope that, I hope this answers it.
Okay, hearing that, is there any discussion for the city council?
May I make a comment? Is this a good time for me to address the comment and concern that was made on my behalf of potentially not being able to vote this evening?
Yes, actually, it's probably good to get on the record, your response to that, and whether you believe you're biased, and whether or not you believe you can be impartial in making a decision tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'd like that opportunity. This is Leslie Pearson, city councillor. In regards to this matter at hand, I'd like to refer to ORS 244.120. At this time, I'm not aware of any potential nor actual conflict of interest regarding this issue. Therefore, I do not feel that I have any bias, and then I can make an objective decision this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Pearson, can I ask you one other question? That, that statute and your comments go to the question of whether you have a conflict of interest, which is based largely on a financial consideration. Outside of financial considerations, is there anything that, that leads you to have a bias either in, against or in favor of this application such that you do not believe you can be impartial?
No, sir, there is not. I believe that I can be fair and impartial in this matter.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Kiefer, Paul Kiefer. I do believe that I need to speak in regards to the comments earlier. I do believe that I can make a fair decision. I do believe I can listen to people. I do believe I, regardless of comments I may have said regarding the county, I don't believe that that would impact a decision in regards to this Tompkins, Tompkins' appeal.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. So is there a motion to adopt staff support and findings? Yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution 6-2022, resolution to deny
Is there a second? I will second that. I'd like to call for a vote. Counselor Pearson?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Kiefer?
Yes.
So we'll leave that the resolution passes. Six, yes, one, no? See, it's March 24th. I think this is the adjournment of tonight's meeting.